We've got about a minute, so we'll make sure that everybody has the same amount of time. So you'll all take your status.
We have a place we won't fix around that side.
Uh, well.
Yeah, it's not right on the front row.
Maybe down there.
Chelsea.
Yeah. Chelsea over there. Tim, you want to go ahead?
And just start it off with ten seconds.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So whatever you're.
Wait just another, wait officially one o'clock.
Yep.
Not arriving.
It's one o'clock, I'm arriving.
For that.
Excuse me. The lighting purposes are different. They extracted, you guys look at what I cut these lights out. This is so strange.
As long as that is ringing.
Could you, yeah.
All right, it is officially one o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting, work session, to work. And Mr. Fairley, go right ahead.
Thanks for coming. Board and Hickory Construction is our first construction manager at risk. Mark Bacham is going to lead off their presentation. I've given them kind of a little bit of an outline that they need to follow fairly closely, but divided up into thirds, an introduction of their folks, an explanation of the construction manager at risk process, kind of in general, and specifics of how they might do it. We need you folks to address our Anka Intermediate School projects as specifically as you can. And any supplementary information you want in that last third, feel free, it's your show. If you want to allow the board to ask questions in the middle, that's fine, but it's your show, so thank you very much for coming, Mr. Bacham.
Thank you, thank you so much. And good afternoon. I had an opportunity, I think, to make my rounds and just introduce myself to most of you, and that's maybe my part, but. I had a very, very well-respected and trusted advisor of mine for many years, and he gave me some good words of wisdom that I've tried to hold on to in my career, particularly the 23 years. And one is, he said, "Now your business." Two, and two, become the best at what you do, I always try for that. And the three, don't be bashful, I, be confident about telling your story. Again, I'm Mark Bacham, I'm president of Hickory, been with us 23 years, and I just want to tell you how much we appreciate it, sincerely, the opportunity to be here. This is a big, big decision, I've done a lot of planning for a while for this school. And we understand the importance of where you have got to today, and it's not been a lack of effort, I'm sure, and y'all's part, a lot of planning, a lot of meetings. And I want to also say, it takes a step of confidence to depart from the traditional design bid build to entering the C-More, the C-More contract. So again, I want to say congratulations, because it does take confidence for this board, kind of that conclusion, and for Anka Intermediate School, and we're very appreciative of you doing that, we think you made the right decision. Hickory Construction, we have performed over four million square feet, four million square feet of schools in the last 20 years, and most of those have been in Western North Carolina. Schools are a passion of our company, they truly are a passion of our company. They've made up a significant amount of our volume for well over 30 to 40 years. I come personally from a family of educators. My mother was a school teacher, all of my, relatively small family, all of my aunts were school teachers, three of my great aunts were school teachers, and even my wife is a school teacher. So being able to be part of the construction process that can bring value to facilities, that can train and educate children, is very, very, very important to me personally, as you imagine. In remaining 27, 28 minutes now, what we would like to do is, we have an A-team, and I can with confidence, as Hickory Secret Construction President, look at each of you in your eyes, and tell you that we have an A-team assembled for your Anka Intermediate School. As I said, it's very important for y'all that you get every organization's A-team. And I know there, with confidence, I say this, the A-team. But what our goal is, is to make sure you basically understand that, and you believe at the end of our 27 or 8 minutes now, that you need our team. And so at that point in time, at this point in time, what I would like to do is to let our team introduce themselves, and start with Chuck Moss.
Chuck Moss, I'm Vice President, Director of the Year, and Lead Estimator, and I've been with the team for 29 years, and in the construction industry for 35 years.
Good afternoon, I'm Aaron Bean, I'm Building Division Manager for Hickory Construction. I've been involved with well over a million square feet of school construction, and I've been with the team for a little over 20 years now.
Hi, Mike Merrill, I have been with the team for a little over eight years now, been in the business for 37 years now, if you can tell with this lightly colored hair, and I am also will be the pre-con manager and the team leader for the project.
Hello, I'm Brian Teaster, I've been with Hickory now a little over 10 years, and I will be here beside you for a minute.
I'm Steve Painter, I've been with the company for two years, and I'll be the Assistant Project Manager.
I'm Bill Milner, I'll be responsible for all the scheduling and schedule-relating activities on this particular job, I've been in the business for over 35 years. Thank you.
Well, the guy that got left out of here is Scott Low, I'm the Director of Business Development, Bill will continue here for five years.
He runs the computer. Look at his tired eyes, a lot of them. I would like to emphasize, Aaron will say this later, talk specifically about it, but the project team that's going to be administering your project is all local to this area, our local project team, and it's extremely important, and that will be emphasized later. A few snippets that were in your books, we were founded in 1941, so we've been in the business after three years. We have a $100 million annual bonding capacity, we've been with Travelers, the largest insurance company in the country, in the world actually, for 32 years, so very sound, stable. We were, I don't want to say it humbly, but we were the recognized as the best general contractor in North Carolina several years back, and that was recognized by our peers, and we're very proud of that award. Integrated project delivery expertise and passion, one thing I want to emphasize is, we have been working in this delivery system for well over 30 years. The team-integrated system with y'all, or process that you're integrating here, putting together, so we're very, very, very comfortable with this process. And I want to emphasize that we're not a joint venture, we are a single-source proven entity for you, and we bring that to you today. So a few statements about Hickory, before I hand it off, what we want to do in our remaining time is obviously be very specific about our team, obviously I opened up, talked about high-performance team. That means basically we're going to concentrate, for your job, which you're specific, pre-construction, and that, you've got to have effective communication, tremendous amount of collaboration, and you have to have, through the process of innovation, and our teams will talk about that. Last, with construction, basically with construction, I'll let Brian Teaster talk about this, but you've just got to do what you say you're going to do, and you've got to basically make sure everybody's part of the team from day one. And if you do that, you can very, very successful in building whatever you want to build. So before I hand it off to Mike, I want to say one thing, it's very important for you to hear me say. In the state of North Carolina, General Statute 143-128, and also there's references to 129, 128.1, it absolutely, and most of you, I'm sure, are very familiar with that through this process, it's very specific on what you can and what you can't do. Our team is very understanding of that statute, we're knowledgeable of it, and through the course of our remaining time, we want to assure you that when, and hopefully if we're selected, we would like to immediately work with whoever your counsel is that has put all this together to make sure that we partner up immediately to enact every clause and everything per the book of 143-128. So with that in mind, let me hand it off to our project team leader, Mike Merrill. Mike?
Good morning, Bunca County School Board, how are you this afternoon?
Good morning.
I will try my best not to bore you through this, I know everybody just had lunch and everything, so I just want to, again, tell you that my name is Mike Merrill, and I also have a very much vested interest in seeing this project bid success for the Bunca County school system, because I truly do live in this area, and I have been doing business in Western North Carolina, in the Asheville area, for probably over 30 years. So, you know, it's very important for me to make sure you know that we are vested, and you know, we're here to give you 100% of everything we have to offer. The other good thing is, I am just coming off of a school project, very much like this same type project here, where we did the pre-con, we're building the building forum, and we've worked with the designers and everything, it's about a 70,000 square foot project in Lake Bluer, North Carolina. So, again, something that's very, very fresh, and we consistently try to do that throughout. What I'd like to do in the next few minutes is just let you know how the pre-con services and pre-con works for your project on this particular thing. Item number one, we need to know your goals, we need to know your crevices, prep, excuse me, preferences, and we also need to identify risks and be able to mitigate those risks early, early on within the bidding process, and not let it make it to the actual, you know, project itself. Communications, communications is the most important thing of any project. In Hickory, we pride ourselves on very doing communication very well. The, knowing the communication and everything would consist with us working with your architect, you as the owner, working with Brian Teaster, working with local first-tier subs, suppliers and stuff, to make sure that, you know, we meet, again, we meet the goals. Item number two, constructibility reviews, what does that mean? Well, constructibility review to us means, we're going to take the plans, we're going to study them, we're going to get first-tier local contractors involved and suppliers. We're going to look at different items that we can identify and talk about early on, before they even get to the bidding stages. And again, part of that will be with Brian Teaster, Steve Painter, and let me just say this, when Brian, myself, and Steve are involved this early in the project, we're also going to be the ones that's going to hand the keys off to you to enter this. So we're building the project, so we probably at that time know more than anybody else versus somebody that just does recon and won't be involved, act of the fact. Value analysis, that is what we normally would call value engineering. What we would do there is we would work closely with the architects and engineers, we would bring new products, maybe the product is the same thing, but it's a different brand, and make sure that we're giving you the same product for a cheaper cost. Because what we're going to do is we'll treat your money like it's our money, okay? It's not going to be spent unblockwise. Budget cost estimates, validate the initial budget. Obviously Mike wants to know that the budget he gave you many months ago, I'm sure, is a good budget, so there's no surprises toward the end of this. So it's up to us to locate real contractors, early on, get them involved, make budget estimates based on the drawings that Mike has first reviewed, and at that point in time, what we'll do is we'll try to come up with a very, very close estimate to validate the budget, whether it's higher, lower, right on track, we're going to be honest and give you that. Item number five, I think is a very important thing for the school board, with your financial agency and stuff, give you an early GMP. GMP, of course, is guaranteed price, a maximum price. In doing so, we are scheduling ourselves and positioning ourselves where we can give you those, say, November 1. And then that way you could go to your financial institutions, you could secure your financing and stuff, and that would give you a head start on that. The bid package preparation and abicadment, also minorities, that's very important for us, we want to make sure that minorities are asked and stuff like that, but we would do the actual working with Mike, bid packages, we would send the abicadments out, we would get that pre-qualifications for our first-tier subs. Having that said and done, your first-tier subs will send in a pre-qualification package that we will work closely with the school board, with my creating criteria, called performance, time, and quality. Those are the most important things that we need to make sure along the same course. The subcontractor bid process, we would distribute the plans, we would receive requests for information, which we pass along to the architect and the engineer for questions and answers, we would also take the bids, at the time of taking the bids, we would review the bids, because with the owner and the architect, we would all make a decision of who has got the lowest qualified bid for each portion of the work. Subcontracts, or the subcontract execution, what we'll do in that particular case, we will prepare the subcontracts for everybody, we will make sure they get them, we'll make sure they get them signed, get them back, they're all properly documented and everything, and that would be part of them ready to go to work. And last, but not least, the preliminary schedule. Now, I want to say that we take your project very serious, we went ahead and done a preliminary schedule, and I'm going to let Mr. Aaron Bean here talk about it, and Mr. Bean, not to be bragging, but he has actually been associated with well over a million square feet of schools in his 20 years of being with Hickory Construction, and I will see if those.
Thank you, Mike. And I'll propose, I suppose, that the person talking about schedule needs to make up a little time in scheduled interviews, trying to do my best I can to get all this in. The schedule is one of the major keys to success to any construction project, however, the schedule is only as good as the information that's initially put in it, and the fact that it must be updated. This is a very, very schedule, we've done a schedule, as Mike said, but if we just put that in a folder, or put it up on the wall, and nothing, you don't look at, the schedule has to be used as a functional tool for the project, and we excel at that. Through the four million square feet of schools that Mark mentioned, we've done, every school I had children going to school in late hours, no schools were delayed, no kids had to stay home for two weeks, all of them were on time. Paramount that we get this project started quickly, we've already taken the time to put our schedule together, incorporating a lot of the items that were provided in the initial schedule that we had. We've got a site work, early site work, scope of work already filled out, ready to go, we've talked to seven local earthwork and branding subcontractors in that area, three of which are very capable, their workload allows, and they can get started tomorrow, if that were possible, which we know it's not. So basically, we've reached out, talked to seven, we've already got three pre-qualified ready to go, we know we still have to do the formal abicadment, but we're ready, we are ready, because we need to get the site contractor onboard, we need to get erosion control out, and start moving dirt, there's a lot of dirt to move, and winter will be here at some point, and we've got to get going. So also, within this schedule, I love labor a lot, we've got the items that Mike mentioned, we've got showing the early GMP by November 4th, which is, again, critical for your funding requirements, as we understand it, and the most important date, we have the project completion of May 6th, which is the same project completion that was contained in the schedule that we received. So we've done a lot of homework to get to this point, and we're raring to go. Again, we have to use this, especially once we're under construction. During pre-construction also, we, we're in a position that we have to hold, everybody within the team, the owner, the design team, and the contractor, have to hold each other accountable. If we have a deadline we have to meet, the design team, your team, has to hold us accountable. Likewise, we need to be a part of holding the other members accountable. Once we're on-site, that schedule's got to be driven, driven hard, driven every day, and nobody drives it better than Brian Teaster, he's going to tell you how that happens. Thank you.
Hello, once again, I'm Brian Teaster, I will be your site superintendent to manage the process of the job. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about actually building the job, I'm not a professional public speaker like these guys, I build buildings every day, year after year, so they're much better than me, but I know how it is on this school, guys, the schedule, that's your most important thing. I believe May the 6th, 2016 is when you've got to be in there, that's no ifs, ands, or buts, I mean, it's got to be May the 6th, 2016. I'm good at driving the schedule, but what drives the schedule is actually communication. If you can't communicate, you cannot keep a current schedule. In driving the schedule, we also have to keep in mind safety, everybody's got to go home every night to their families, no fatalities, no accidents, no injuries. I'm real big on quality control, I'm going to have guys in the field, if we're putting in door frames, I'm going to have guys going through there with a four-foot level check them to make sure they're plumb, so that when we go back many months later hanging doors, we don't have to walk down the hallway and doors are just standing open because they're out of form. I'm real big on safety, quality control, and driving the schedule. Coordination of trades, I feel like we excel at coordination, and if you can't coordinate your trades, and you can't control them or handle them, you're going to have problems, which is going to go right back to the schedule, and I'm going to complete on May the 6th, 2016. We have frequent meetings, daily, weekly, monthly meetings, to see where we're at, what needs to happen, who's holding who. Once again, if you don't do this, you cannot make that. Actually introduce you to a gentleman that's going to be helping me facilitate this process in the frequent meetings, and let him talk just a second before I call back into this.
Hey, everybody, thank you, Brian, I'm Steve Painter again, I'll be the Assistant Project Manager for this project, I live locally in the area, actually just a little west Asheville, western Carolina, and plan to be in the mountains, I love the mountains, I almost call them my mountains sometimes, but a little bit, a little bit like they're mine, so. As Assistant PM on this project, I will be the onsite support for Brian and Mike, not that they need it, I'll be there handling smittles, R5s, shop drawings, and you coordinate those with the trades, that's key to the team approach, and bringing this project in successfully, especially with that coordination. Also, meetings, Brian mentioned meetings, we need to have meetings sometimes, but if they're efficient and effective, that's my job, I got to make sure the meetings are efficient and effective, and we go about our work and get it done in a timely, timely fashion. Just as a side note, both Brian and I, we have small children, they're almost school age, so doing a school project and such as this kind of hits home with us, so I'm going to turn it back over to Brian now to speak about construction.
Thanks, Steve. Speaking of team, I've worked with these guys for years, and you don't, I mean, everybody knows how this, you can't win a World Series without a team. This team is great, I like, I enjoy every person that I work with. You are not going to find a more proactive team, trying to find problems in the plans or in the specifications, early on, that is going to help save you guys money in the long run. You know, I want to talk, schedule, 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 we have never, once again, I'm going to say this again, we have never missed a deadline on school. We're going to do whatever it takes to get your students in there, May the 6th, 2016, if that's working every weekend for six months, if that requires pulling multiple shifts 24 hours a day, it's got to happen, it's not a choice. I'd like to talk a little about the site, step over here where everybody can see, I am very familiar with this area, like I say, I grew up here, went to college here, everything. As you know, this right here is Sarus Road, and this right here is Sand Hill Road, you guys have been down this intersection three, four, five o'clock any day of the week, I mean, traffic can be back the way down this road here. I've studied it, I'm thinking our best construction entrance would be coming in this road and use, utilize this one, or this one, the gray and the concrete lines, as you can see here, it's a little steep, I feel like our best construction entrance would be here, and speaking of building, the building stuff, if you want to flip over, given the information that I have, just two floor planes, first and second floor, and a project description, I will start construction over here in this area. As you guys know, the gymnasium and cafeteria serves as huge open areas, I'd like to start construction here, get the walls up, get this thing in the drive, the roof on, this will allow for ample storage, tools, material, and as you know, the sprinkle riser room, mechanical room, switchgear, everything is fed out of this end of the building, and feeds throughout the building, even to the second floor mechanical faucets and such. One concern that I do have on this project is, is most of all of your corridors, and I think your classroom areas, is a polished, stained concrete floor, we're going to have to work together to figure out ways to protect that stuff, because I've dealt with it before, and if it gets damaged, there is no repair. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it back over to Aaron Bean.
Thank you for saying so.
Thanks, Brian. Just a little bit of supplemental information in closing, in the last five minutes instead of the last 10. Repeating a little bit, going to expand a little bit on some things that Mark had said, again, and we're very proud of this, and we think it is very important, over four million square feet of schools in the last 25 years, 90% which is in the western North Carolina area, I again have had my hands in, well over a million of those, pretty much if Mike's design team puts something in Anka Intermediate School, more than likely Hickory Construction has seen it, and will be able to address any concerns and provisions for that element. Again, as Brian and Mark both said, and I probably said too, all these schools opened on time, they didn't have to have Plan B, or enact Plan B, they probably had it. Two of the schools that we've done have been from Bunca County Schools, one is the addition to Weaverville Elementary that we completed with Bowers, Ellis, and Watson a number of years ago, and before that, before my time, we also did Owen High School, the original project, so that was before my time, but as you can see, just a myriad of schools, and we could talk for days about our school, but we'll stop there. Again, another important point, and I'm sounding arrogant, we are not a joint venture, we have the financial capability, the experience, the personnel, long story short, we don't need any help, we've got it covered, I'm sorry, it's just weird. And lastly, our team is local, Hickory Construction is a local Asheville area contractor. Mike has his workstation in this area, 15 minutes from the job site. Brian, Mike, and Steve all live 15 minutes from your school, so it's not out of state, out of county, or well, not out of the general area, I should say, they're close, they're close, it's not, not the guys from down the mountain in Hickory coming up to try to get a job in the mountains, we've been here for over 30 years, we've done millions of square feet up this way, so we're very, very committed, we've got decades-long subcontractor relationships, we've worked a long time with Bowers, Ellis, Watson, we've worked with them very well, so we're just extremely excited. Very quickly, just a few of our local projects that you probably can recognize, some, Lord Y M C A, in Billmore Park, Ramble, Living Wells there in Billmore, this is a project we did with Bowers, Ellis, Watson, a number of years ago, Mountain Area Hospice, that was a great job, renovation at Billy Graham Transit Center, the Cove, Walmond Cove Town Homes, over 32 million dollar plus townhomes, some of you folks may own those, I certainly don't, but Billmore Baptist Church, and certainly do not want to, now, there's a story, there's a story here, wait, wait for it.
Hey, you guys are good.
While we did not build the original Billmore House, we have done the only addition to the Billmore House that's ever been done, and that's the Sable Cat button, we didn't, and we're proud of it. So we did not build the Billmore, and I'm going to let Mark plug, let him pack something there.
We're out of time, in two minutes, I want to conclude, just try to make a few quick points. Our team, I hope you felt today, we're ready to go, they're committed, and I hope you felt that, we're ready to go, the team is available tomorrow to start, maybe we get the call tomorrow, or hopefully tomorrow from Mike Watson, your team are ready to go, and you've got my personal commitment, Asheville has been important to this company for 40 years, well over, I was talking to somebody just pulling hand about some of the key relationships we've got, just said we can't screw.
Just simply, we can't screw this up. It has got to be right, and let's just be honest. It's got to be right as a small community. We're ready to go, small community. Everything's about good teamwork. And lastly, we desire this project. We want this project. We're asking you for a sale. Mr. Bob, we've got a contract here. We've looked at, we've viewed it. We've got a couple of things that are not deal breakers. We can get through that, I promise, in an hour, not two weeks, and we'll be ready to go. Okay? So with that, I'd like to say, I believe we're under 30 minutes, and that's exactly how we're going to finish your project on time and on time. So now, if you have some questions?
Yeah, we'll just start. Does Mr. Pliss, do you have a question you'd like to ask?
How did you help the entire team come forward?
Well, no. You brought the floor, the concrete floor.
Yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Basically, I won't ramble on and ramble on, but when you pour this stuff, you polish it, okay? And we all know what a polished stainless steel surface or any kind of polished surface looks like. You're also going to stain it. Once you stain concrete, it's stained. It's just like staining a piece of wood tree. When you damage it, it's so hard to repair it. And I don't know if you guys have ever seen where somebody's tried to repair the side of the door jamb, where somebody's hit it. Your stain's not going to match up. It's, we've got to work together. It can be protected. We actually have a job pretty near here, has a lot of polished concrete. We protect it. It looks great. I saw it the other day. But there's measures about protection to when, you know, at the end where it looks like what it's supposed to look like. That's a lot of square feet of polished stained concrete. We're not talking about one or two classrooms or maybe the media center or something like that. I believe, if I read the project description, it's classrooms, corridors, hallways. Mostly in your admin area, I believe, gets the carpet. That's a lot of polished concrete.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry. I was just going to add one up. Go ahead.
We are currently doing a project with just a little under 20,000 square feet of polished concrete, so we are very familiar with the protection process and not only that, the polishing process and everything that it takes to make that a good option. I have to be one of the people that say, I would love to have some of that at my house. I mean, I think it looks great, but it does take a lot of extra things. And it kind of goes back to the old days when you used to see a lot of tarazo for, you know, that final grinding and polishing and stuff. But we are very aware of what it takes to make that a good process.
Also, what I was going to add, it also requires a little extra protection before installation because you can't get oil or anything like that, but that'll show it to you. Okay. Got that direction, Mike?
As you look at this project, what's your biggest concern or are there further big concerns?
Do you want me to take that? More than I can speak, but we, as I mentioned earlier, we need to get grading going yesterday. Winter's coming. There's 100,000 yards of dirt to move. The site needs to be stabilized. Parking lots need to be in with stone and binder so that this thing can get cranking right at the end of the year, right at the first of the year. Nobody can control the weather. All the grading contractors that Mike has met with and talked with up here, we've shared the schedule with them. Guys, we've got to get this done per this schedule, get this padded. And everybody says unless it rains three days a week from now until the end of the year, they think it can happen, but they're all concerned with you don't know exactly when it's going to get super cold or you don't know exactly when it's going to start snowing. Nobody in this room can control that, so we want to start moving dirt very soon. I would say that's my concern.
And Chip, I'd say, I think you asked a question. That's why we've worked very hard in this month to not waste any time. In the event we've won your confidence and we get that call, with the team talking about it, we've already got the qualification ready to go out. We've got a bid solicitation already drawn up, site work ready to go out tomorrow if we could during the contract. So we've already taken those advanced steps, talking to subs, requiring, say, if we call you, you got to go. So we've already down the road, but as a concern that...
And we have basically talked to local contractors that could handle 100,000-yard, you know, dirt moving project and stuff here that are local to the area. And we feel that's going to be very important to try to keep as many first-tier subs local to this area so that they have a vested interest, just like everybody in this room, in making sure this is a good project, okay? Because let's face it, when we meet somebody on the street, I want to shake your hand, not go, oh, gosh, here's a guy. Don't walk, that's not the relationship I'm looking for, and that's not the subcontractors that we're looking for either. So I have talked very serious with everybody and shared a very aggressive schedule that we would have to meet. And I have three people that are saying, of course, give me some plans. All I've got to do is give me the plans and we'll start, you know? So we do have a commitment from people that we feel would meet the qualifications, the criteria that we would set for and that would say, yes, we'll meet that schedule.
I'd like to add something to that. I mean, with me growing up here, going to college here, I've lived my whole life here, this is a local project to me. I'm not so much worried because it's 15 minutes from the house and I don't have to travel, but what I'm getting at, this is a lot of money that's going to be spent in the county or in the area. You know, Bunkham County pays the contractor, please the contractor pay the subcontractor, the subcontractor pays his employees. We're going to be, if we can get this and we can use local subs, we're going to be keeping all this money local. Those employees are going to be going to the grocery store and the local Walmart and the local tire center, keeping the money local. And that's very near here to me.
And we got to that, that part, we got certain relationships. I mean, this week, we're starting grading on 90 million dollar job at Warner Rock. I signed a $1.3 million contract with Boltz. Signed a half million dollar contract with Dave Steel. And we've got such long-standing relationships with Emery Haynes and Runter, Indy Haynes. This has been down for 40 years in the actual area. So I mean, our job is to try, as the team said, get as much qualification locally as the team, including minorities. And we've got the relationships.
We'll come back to you just a second. You used to buy fire centers for my little fire and safety. Ms. Fawcett?
You mentioned getting an early GMP to us, and I just wanted to ask, I talked to some architects and they said one problem with the CMR is that you're supposed to collaborate with the architect from the beginning, and that's not always happening, is what they've seen. But I just wanted to make sure that you all would be doing that from the beginning and getting an early GMP. Does that mean that you could possibly leave something out or that...
Couple of points I want to note. That, and our team emphasized that over 4 million square foot of school, first, first point. That is so important because we've got such good historical cost data. We just finished up an 83,000 square foot of school that we're turning over, or actually this week, well, they're in, the kids are coming. We've got current cost data. So we know, I want to be very careful, I say, we should know within $5 per foot of the total job, what it costs because of our historical experience, back to core business. Our relationship with Bowers, Ellis, Watson is deep. I met Mike Watson 20 years ago at Winkle Elementary School that we did. So the only way we can do this successfully, Lisa, is to team up. And if you call us, the first thing we're going to do is schedule a meeting with Mike and his team and Woody Clazell, we've got a good relationship with Woody Clazell, say, we've got to sit down and talk and we've got to make sure that the budget is kept. Now, as I said on 143, 128, yes, there's guidelines, but y'all are under concern, concerns, I mean, understanding concerns for LGC funding. We have to get you a GMP, and it's going to be a challenge, but we're committing to do that, my understanding is by November 1. And as I said, we've got a balance between communication with the architect and the design team and the contingencies and also trying to meet that and good communication with subs following within the 143 guidelines. So very good question, but we understand that process, Lisa, and we've got the historical data. So if we give you a number left in one, we have to live with that number. We have to live with that number. That's what a GMP is about. It can't go up later unless Mike adds next week or scope change. So we are here to secure your money and the taxpayer money, just like it's ours. Is that it's your question?
Yes, thank you.
Your question?
Ms. Franklin?
As rare as it may be, I don't have a question.
Ms. Brian, I have one, and I'm going to ask the same question to all three to try to gauge the... I appreciated the information we got ahead of time. It was helpful. Mr. Craig and I were talking at lunch. This is outside of our area, but it's... In at least one of those pre-presentation before today, it was touched on a little bit today. There was some, not really some detail, but a lot of talk of, and I did some of my own reading, keeping the costs down and more controlling the cost based on what you do versus the middle or to the back. And can you touch on that some more and maybe a little more detail of it? And also, maybe how you feel you're differentiated from other people and how you...
You want to take one there? Mike? Let me address that question for you, sir. You are absolutely 100% correct that how you can guide a project, how you can save money on a project is in the beginning, okay? During the time that Mike is drawing it on a piece of paper and not, we're pouring concrete and deciding we need to take that and move it over here, okay? So having that said and done, we are prepared to give Mike and his engineers and associates 100% of our time to make sure that we give you the best information we can price-wise, and not only price, but any new products that may be on the market that can help your price, you know, saving money. But yes, you are absolutely correct. Where that savings can be really found is in the front end and the design of it. And we, again, are very committed to making sure that we give Mike that kind of support and information that's needed to make those decisions. And also, kind of, we know we're probably behind the curve a little bit, you know, right now, but we're willing to do what we've got to do and make that up to keep this project on track.
And Pat, to add to that, that's where we don't do anything as important as you can. Team, when I say there's over 100 years, the whole key succinctly, what difference it just is, when you have done a school experience and that kind of relationship with the architect and Woody Clazell, struggling with designers, you're hiring us to know what's in the scope of work. That's what you're hiring us, that there can't be change orders later where, and you say, you guys should have known that. You're the experts and sold us as that. And but it's incumbent upon every face there, when you're combining this experience, surely with that level of experience and the commitment this team brings and us working together as a team, I want to confidently say, not arrogantly say, we won't miss anything together because together, we're going to have the right answer and we're going to make sure that every, if you're one of everything in that building, you're not going to get change order for it later.
Mr. Pliss, this is not that big of a deal. How many construction companies are large enough to move in, locally, that are large enough to move this kind of dirt?
We originally reached out to seven that are large enough. Unfortunately, four of them had a lot of work. I mean, here's something else we're finding, we're finding in the subcontractor market, a lot of people, work is starting to come up, come available now, okay? So out of the seven people we originally contacted, which could handle 100,000 yards, get it done in 60 days and meet our criteria, we initially reached out to seven. Four come back and said, we have just recently got this job, this job, and we just cannot commit because of these people, I've been working in this area for over 30 years. One thing people know about me is I'm very fair, but I'm very serious. When I ask you a question, I want you to be honest with me. I will accept a good, bad, or indifferent answer, but they were very, very nice in saying, Mike, we just can't meet your schedule. But we did find three large, local contractors that are local to the Bunkham County area here, some of them that are within five or 10 minutes of the site, okay? That are willing to meet our schedule if we current schedule that we have. It's just a matter of, you know, getting them under contract and, you know, start moving dirt.
Lisa, I got to say one more thing. One of the comments up there was on budget, seeing how we're going to do. We have to, we would strongly recommend that if you allow us to validate estimates that are produced, so far, we have to put a pin for this with our expertise. So one of the first things is, we're going to do is we would like to validate estimates of Bowers, Ellis, Watson initially to make sure, are the numbers y'all have been given, do they sync up with our 4 million experience, million square feet of experience? And right there out of the chute, we're going to be talking to Mike and his team and engage and say, wait a minute, you used X dollars per square foot for a mechanical. It looks like it could be a dollar, $2 below. Let's talk about it. Let's get the mechanical engineer. So we're going to know that within the first three or four weeks that you hire us. Then as we develop the bid papers and the bid scope, we're going to be working to make sure they stay in line with that.
Their estimate was close to $20 million? Is that something? Are you usually close to what the architect estimates on a whole project?
We feel like, with the estimate that we've seen and our preliminary understanding of the description and scope, that you are okay with your budget. That's our preliminary assessment before we do this. Yes, we normally are at or below the architect engineer's estimate.
All right, well, we're about that away. Gentlemen, I just want to thank you for being here. Pretty much any questions that I have are asked, but you know, I think it's been very important from the beginning of this process that we're looking for local connections and all the way across the board where they can be utilized. So it's, that's something that's very important this board, and we appreciate your time, appreciate you being here, and we can deliver right from here a little bit.
You know when you're having a...
Probably about a month back there.
You're getting your back upside your head.
All right, we're going to move on back into the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that too. We've got a few minutes left.